But after two, we're gonna wait just a minute if y'all don't mind and give everybody, we were expecting a few more commissioners. So if it's okay with all of y'all, we're gonna hold up a sec.
Who are we missing? Missing John? Beth. Even if we get just Beth, we might not have enough color. I mean, six. Who's supposed to be sitting? Who's in front of me? Yeah, she says she's coming. Me, Sharon, and John, and Beth. These are about three people. Oh, yeah, and then you can't find them. I don't know. It's the IRS 10, uh, not the latest that held for the one that we want. I don't know how to make it. But therefore, he missed some of the emails when he dropped them. That takes us to five. Six, seven.
Welcome to the January 18th meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or a group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into its deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absence. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off of your cellpho-- please turn your cellphones off at this time. I'm gonna call Roe. Ms. Jennifer Denson?
Here.
Mr. Val-- Mr. Valas?
Here.
Ms. Sessions?
Here.
Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Amberger?
Here.
Ms. Rich?
Here.
And I'm Levle Latham. We have a quorum. And we're gonna get started. First on our agenda, we'll take the holdovers. The first one is 9601 Three Notch Chrona Road. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone to speak against it? Thank you. We'll move on to number two. Number two is 680 Azalea Road. It's a planned unit development and planning approval. Is the applicant present? Have you seen the new recommendations that they have prepared? And y'all, are y'all in agreement with those new recommendations?
If you would, she-- these are, I think, just for, if y'all decide, right? So they need to make their presentation, because that recommendation from the staff is y'all need to hear it and determine it. These conditions are if y'all do decide. Because there are some issues with this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Please come on down.
Hello, my name's Steve Fisher. I'm from Element III Engineering, representing Ms. Davis for 680 Azalea Road. Got the comments from the planners this week. Addressed most of the issues on the site plan, or all of them. We, a couple of things we did, we relocated our handicap parking to one end of the area, just to kinda direct the flow of the children in that area. Also, we relocated some steps--
Excuse me, Mr. Fisher, can I interrupt you for just one second?
Yes, ma'am.
I think all of the commissioners have your, the new plat in front of them, if you wanna look at it while he talks. Thank you.
Yes, yes, and all these, all these revisions are on the plat. I had sent these to Bert after I talked to Mary Beth and got some herb comments on it. Um, we've designated proposed play area on the south side of this development and on the south and the west side of it. We're gonna re-strip the parking spaces along with the existing directional areas that are there. We have adequate parking that's required, and we feel like we've addressed and submitted all these conditions, and if we get approval today, hopefully we can. And she's working very hard to bring her site currently, you know, up to code for the children to take care, and, you know, we would just ask for your approval today for this case, please.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yes, uh, you know, I know it's not always depicted on the drawings about the retention ponds here. How do you plan on addressing that? I know it's not shown on this, on this site plan.
Right, I've got a, on the drainage plan, I've got a detention pond that's kinda east of the last building, and there is a storm drain. There's two S-inlets there, and there's a storm drain. We're gonna tie into the one to the south. It's, it's fairly deep, and it's not gonna take a whole lot of volume to carry what we're adding.
Are there any other questions by commissioners? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone present?
If I could ask the gentleman a question, please, ma'am, and I, again, I'm not in favor or against it, it doesn't matter, it's y'all's decision. I just have some concerns from a safety viewpoint and creating liability on the city if this is approved, in that there's, it seems very little area for cars maneuvering through here and dropping off kids. You've got 17 parking spaces and 11 employees, so there'll only be six, possibly only six open spaces for parents of 116 kids, and do you know how the maneuvering, I mean, are these kids gonna be dropped off, are their parents gonna park and take their kids? I mean, you've got, you're gonna have kids from infants up to eight years old, and some of these kids are gonna be so young, they can't just get out of a car and walk to class. Their parents are gonna have to park and take their child to class, and I just, with the close proximity, those parking spaces to the entrance to Azalea, and you got, you can imagine the queuing problem with people trying to turn in here and people backing out of those parking spaces. I can, I can just see a safety nightmare, and, so I just wanna throw that out there and ask if you can address how the drop-off of the kids is gonna be, and do, you know, do most parents park and take their kids inside, or are they just teachers outside and take the kids in?
I think it's a combination of both. I think most, the times I've been there, they do drop the, they'll park and drop the children off. Of course, it's, you know, it's various times during the day. It's never at one set time where you get a majority of them, but they, you know, that's what I've seen, they drop them off, and the teachers are at the door, I believe, assisting with bringing the children in. So, and it's-- It's functioned that way for, I says, she's had it since 2015.
Can we hear from the owner? I mean, I think that, I think hearing from the owner of how it, how it functions, I think would be helpful to us.
And while she's coming down, Mary Beth, can you take a left out of this site with that, I mean, all that traffic heading southbound on Azalea Road? I mean, I've been through there. I can't imagine that many cars taking a left out of that site.
There, there is no restriction on the left-hand turn, um, and with it being a five-lane section, they can take it at their will as traffic allows on the road.
I have a question on the drawing, if that's okay, unless you have more questions. Okay, I'm seeing where you say "existing parking striping to be removed." So you're actually pulling parking closer to the modular buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, do the teachers step out? I mean, you say they meet them at the door, but I'm just, well, maybe you can explain it. I didn't know what I, what that meant.
We just help assist some of the parents when they come in. They help them get the kids out of the car to keep the traffic moving, and we've just been doing it for three years like that. When they come in, they sign in and sign out, but we just try to keep the flow going. So if they need help with more than one kid, we'll go out and help them or whatever.
So they come in this, this entrance here, and it's sort of in the middle, closer to--
The north entrance, right.
Okay.
Do you ever have occurrences where the traffic, you know, where the, the traffic in front of the existing building is, there's five or six cars there, and then the traffic is backed up out into Azalea Road at all?
No, we never had that problem.
Do you currently have 116 students enrolled?
Yes.
You do, and you've had that for the last three years?
Well, it grew, you know, over the years, over the time. It started off at like maybe 50 and 60, and we cater to Fundy Elementary School a lot, because it just became an all-year-round school, so of course I have like 50 kids there that we, you know, cater to the parents and pick them up and take them home. So we work with Fundy as well.
So you're open at 8:00 AM, 6:30 AM?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and go until 6:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
So the after-school care, what is the number that are actually coming that are after school?
Uh, the after-school care is right at 62.
62.
So, as we, as we review these suggested conditions, you know, it, the suggestion is to limit it to 116, so is that just to take burden off of the, off of the existing building, or is there an intent for it to be, for it to be bigger than what?
No, we had some old buildings out there, and we was, the city told us to move the other buildings, so we, we've been working out of what the college building--
Well, they were, they were some cotton state--
Yeah, we had some old buildings--
That's what--
Okay, so there was existing buildings that you're, that you're removing and replacing with these new, with your new proposed buildings?
Right, and when I found out it was not the right buildings, of course, we moved real quickly to get them removed and trying to get the new buildings in, so we was working with those buildings for a long time until we just found out they was not the right--
So you're basically just replacing the space, but replacing the space with new buildings?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Right, Mr. Amberger, this application is due to the fact of a code complaint about the two other buildings that used to be on site. They were not up to fire or building code for the use as daycare and classes.
Okay.
So those have been removed, and they will be coming back with code compliant buildings.
All right, thank you.
Are there any further questions from any commissioners? Thank you all.
Nita Davis, 680 Azalea Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36609.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, Mr. Fisher.
Are you the owner or are you a tenant in this building?
No, I'm the owner.
You're the, you own it currently?
Mm-hmm, the director.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
Well, oh, I don't know. I have another question about, I'm, I'm thinking of the logistics of dropping off into the new. I could see people coming into that entrance, and then you say teachers come out, the parents don't park, or they do, they're, they do park and come in?
Well, they, they park when, like, with the smaller kids or whatever, they smoke, park and come in and sign in, because they are required to sign in. So the parents come in and sign in, but I have my assistant at the door with the clipboard or whatever. Some parents have like maybe three or four kids that need help with little baby babies or whatever, so--
Right.
The ones that we know that need help, when we see them pull up, we have a parking area right in front of the stairway, so they normally pull right in front of there, and when we, when we look out the window and see them, we'll just help assist them when they have like two or three more kids to get out, and they'll come in and sign out, or my assistant will carry the clipboard out and let them sign in, and we keep it moving.
And, and the children that need the assistance will stay in the building that's already, or do you anticipate that they would then come down to the, the larger building for your after-school additional children?
No, no, they'll stay in, like, small kids, all my small kids stay into the building that's there now. The larger is mainly for my five-years-old and after-school kids. That's what we've been using the other buildings for, for after-school care, probably don't have to mix the age groups up or whatever. So that's, they stay out, and the larger building, like five-years-old until like Fundy and ER Dixie, they, they all stay out, and all my babies stay in.
Did, do you envision any traffic issues where you have this existing curb cut that's further south?
I'm sorry?
You, you have an existing curb cut that's further south that's going to be closed up. I mean, did you envision like stacking, or where maybe you could've made this drive extend further to that southern curb cut and enclose this middle one to allow more stacking of cars and parents, or you don't envision having a problem like that?
No, it's, it's been there for, I don't know how long--
Yeah, we've been--
I know it's been there, but aren't we increasing the number of, what's existing today is irrelevant to what we're going to, isn't it?
Yes, we're, yeah, we're increasing it. Of course, the modular buildings and the teachers and everything are calling us to increase our, you know, park.
See, and like three of my teachers, they're not there all day. They just come in from 2:30 till 6 o'clock, you know, they're just after-school teachers, so they're, those spaces is empty all day until they come in at evening time, so--
Mary Beth, I just know we have like queuing for like restaurants and pharmacies, but I get it, we don't have that for daycares and schools, but does it make sense where if we push that access point further south, and they do have more room for circulation and stacking, or is that not a concern with traffic?
I mean, unless they wanted to change how they were gonna do their drop-off, I don't know that it would really gain anything. I mean, they have a lot of extra asphalt between their parking spaces with them pushing it closer to their modular buildings, where they, they, I mean, what they kinda have is like a horseshoe-type situation going on in the paved area, so, I mean, it's, it's all a matter of how it's gonna function, and we can make them, or, I shouldn't say make, we can request that they use the southernmost driveway, but they still may function just like they are now and still go, you know, not gated--
Do you think it'd be better to use the southern one, or you don't?
That southern, southmost, southernmost one that's gonna be removed, that's where the detention pond is.
Yeah.
Correct.
So they'd have to re-engineer it if, if that was gonna be utilized.
I didn't see, I'm sick of looking at this plan. It's not designated retention on this plan right here.
I guess in summary, what you're, what you're doing is you're, you're making your parking lot a little bit bigger, and you're just replacing two existing buildings with two new code-compliant buildings.
Right.
That, that's it in a nutshell?
Right.
And there are quite a few existing frontage trees, large oaks that are kinda in the area where, between the middle to center driveway and the one first to the south. There's a couple of big trees there, have, have a big root base, so we'd like to try to leave.
Does that answer everybody's questions? Are there any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Fisher, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak that is in opposition to it? Thank you. Third on the agenda is 2650 and 2652 Old Shell Road and 107 Highland Avenue, Highland Place subdivision. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Next on our agenda is 258 Dolphin Street. Applicant present and in, in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. And number five, 1790 West Ass 65 Road South, request to waiver, sidewalk waiver. It is recommended for denial. Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak? Well, come on down.
Good afternoon, Margaret Jordan. I'm with Oppenin, 400 Water Street, Excelsior, Minnesota. We respect, respectfully ask that you request our waiver. This is a situation in a environment where you have no surrounding properties other than the Shell Gas Station and Storage Building Place slightly to the left of the property, 400 and some feet around the corner across the bridge, which do have sidewalks, but no other adjoining properties have a sidewalk. As a sidewalk lover, we truly appreciate the fact that there's an initiative in this community to create sidewalks and create walkability, et cetera, but in this particular neighborhood, it just doesn't seem to make sense. On top of that, you have some grade changes right at our curb cut that are rather steep, and even though the Alabama DOT has said they won't require it, the gist of it is, is that in order to make that sidewalk now AD/AG compliant, we have to, we have to bury that ditch in order to get the sidewalk in there. And as I sat there and looked at it today and drove up and down the street and got out and walked it, we could put the sidewalk in front of our property, but then what happens to the neighboring properties, because you've got grade changes there and elevation changes, and in my development experience, once you fill in a ditch, water tends to go elsewhere, and I'm wondering if that wouldn't possibly create a different situation? You know, we, we are a, Northern Tool is a, is a practical company, and that's how they were founded, on creating practical things, and a sidewalk in this particular situation on this property, we feel just, isn't all that practical.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
And George, why she's here, has engineering looked at this from an, and your assessment? It can be built?
Yeah, it looks like you can build it on the sidewalk, and anyone that comes on the adjoining properties, we'd make them tie to the existing sidewalk.
Is this any different than the hotel application that we denied a month or so ago? That was basically the same.
John, I think that the reality is, is it can be built, but short of them having to close up a ditch on Aldott right away, it probably has to be built on their private property via a sidewalk easement, because Aldott typically does not want the sidewalks on there right away. So that's what happens, is it does, it does, would encroach into their property, and then they would have to grant the, grant the city a sidewalk easement to accommodate the sidewalk.
But that's a pretty common occurrence, correct?
That, that's what we've done in the past.
We aren't opposed to doing any of that. I would ask that you consider that at this stage in time, at the development of this property, that perhaps we create the landscaping area in, where the sidewalk would have to go, so that as the property that surrounds us gets developed, you can figure out how to incorporate the sidewalk into what will become the Northern Tool sidewalk portion. Right now, as I sat and walked it and drove it, I think we do have some engineering challenges there to make a continuous sidewalk along that frontage road.
I, I think we've heard your concern many times, and while it does have merit, the reality is, is we waited till every parcel of land in the city of Mobile was ready to build sidewalks. At one time, we would never build anything, so the position has generally been, if it can be built, we require that it be built. You should know that there's talks, in fact, just, just this morning, about walking trails back behind you that would tie to, tie to some of these things, so the city is on a pretty, pretty serious effort to build sidewalks, improve sidewalks, connect them to walking trails. I realize your, your particular parcel does not, would not connect to anything right now, but it's highly likely that it would in the, in the future. And I can't say if that future is six months down the road or six years down the road.
Sure.
But you gotta start sometime where you don't ever get started.
Sure. So are those walking trails that are being proposed on our side of the river, or would they be on the other side of the river?
Well, again, it would probably be on one side or the other of the, of the, of the waterway that's the ditch that's behind you.
Right.
That's not, not fully vetted yet, but there are talks about along many of those waterways, or those ditches, making walking trails. In fact, the one to the south of you on Highway 90, it was, it was turned into a walking trail just last year.
Okay.
If you look across there, you'll see it's a paved, it's a paved road, about two, almost two miles of it.
Do I have to go back and--
When it, when it rains, it's very much a river.
Right.
Very much a river when it rains.
River of dreams.
Right.
Any further questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you very much. Number six is West Wood Plaza subdivision. It's been recommended for tentative approval. Applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. We will move into our deliberations. Number one, Downers Rock subdivision, which is 9601 Three Notch Chrona Road. It has been recommended for tentative approval.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. 680 Azalea Road, it's a planned unit development and planning approval.
Move to approve, subject to staff's revised conditions?
Second.
Call in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Application is approved. Number three, 2650 and 2652 Old Shell Road. Application recommended for tentative approval.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Well, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four, 258 Dolphin Street. Application has been recommended for approval.
Can I ask a question on that one? What's the current occupant load of that space right now? What's the current occupant load of that space right now?
They're asking for one hundred and twenty-two. Do you, you mean the current occupancy level?
Right, anything over a hundred will require sprinkler system to be installed in the building.
Yeah, one hundred and twenty-two.
And the occupancy classification is going to be an A-two.
A-two?
Which incorporates restaurants, bars, and the line for having a sprinkler system installed is a hundred. So, if it increases from what it is now to over a hundred, it's going to require a sprinkler system.
So, if the current occupancy is one hundred and twenty-two or more, will they have to make adjustments?
If it's, if it's an existing structure, if there's no change of occupancy, it would be okay. But if it's increasing to one hundred and twenty-two, then it would have to have a sprinkler system.
Mr. Hoffman, do we need to address that in?
Well, I don't believe that we had a pre-development meeting with the applicant for this site, and it was previously a piano bar, I believe.
Okay.
I don't know if the occupant load will be increasing over what was there previously, so that would be something that would have to be looked at if there were any permit requirements, and maybe now a pre-development meeting would be beneficial in terms of building and fire code requirements.
Very good.
Do we know if the building is currently sprinkled?
That I don't know, the applicant may know.
Sir, would you, do you mind coming down to the mic? It's Mr. Scott, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you know whether the building currently has a sprinkler system, is sprinkled?
No, it does not.
And do you have plans to?
That was, that was a question that I had, when I spoke with, I think, the building inspection, Mr. Todd, I can't think of his last name, and I was trying to figure out what the occupancy load was. In fact, he told me that the prior, I guess the previous agency, a previous owners, that the building occupancy was one hundred and twenty-two, so, which is where we got the number from, is I was told that was the low several years ago and has been. But no, there's not a sprinkler system, because that was a question that, a concern that I had as well.
Okay, that'd be fine if there was no change of occupancy, and the existing occupant load is one-twenty-two, that'd be fine.
So, I guess my question is, there is a change in occupancy, because it's a different venue. I don't know.
Well...
You mean occupancy number?
Occupancy type, yes. It's going to remain an A-two.
He's discussing the building and fire code occupancy issues versus what the planning commission considers.
Okay. So, Mr. Hoffman, do we need, do we need to address that at all?
Well, before Mr. Scott can move forward, he'll need to make sure that he is in compliance with all building and fire codes, so there's really nothing the commission has to do in that respect.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on this one?
Would it be appropriate for us to make a conditional approval of this? I mean, if we can verify that the occupancy load in fact is one hundred and twenty-two, that it remained, but if we find out that it was not, cap it at one hundred, unless he wants to come back, I mean, it's...
Well, you could cap it at one-twenty-two as a maximum that you would approve, subject to compliance and verification through building and fire code consultation.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I have a question, though, as long as we're still discussing. This is in the entertainment district, correct, on Dolphin?
Yes, it is.
And isn't there some kind of code on square footage and how many people can be in, and does that, is that looked at too?
Again, that's going to be building and fire code issues, it's not something that planning looks at. So, you know, based on what the planning commission is reviewing, if you are okay with the occupant load as proposed at one-twenty-two, then that is all that they would be allowed to have. The square footage issues would be addressed when he consults with the building and fire code officials.
And the fire code doesn't get into the fact that this is a venue that went from musical with pianos to cigars and smoking, where...
Captain Allen can address that much better.
You just look at numbers of people, not the activity.
We look at the activity, it's not going, the activity is going to be basically the same, a bar and lounge.
Mm-hmm, because they allow smoking.
From what it was previously. The smoking is kind of irrelevant in that issue, but it's going, it's going to maintain the same name as a bar and a lounge.
It's more of the number of people that you could safely get out in an incident.
Correct.
Yeah.
Condition number three would take care of both y'all's concerns?
Yeah, the full compliance.
And I think the applicant obviously did speak with the building department, because one hundred and twenty-two just didn't, that number just took, got pulled out of the sky, so...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
There's a motion, within a second, someone? Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Number five is the seventeen-ninety, West I-65 Service Road South. For a sidewalk waiver, yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Number five, seventeen-ninety, West I-65 Service Road South. It's an application for a waiver of a sidewalk, and it's been recommended for denial.
Move to deny based on staff recommendations.
Second. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? The application for a sidewalk waiver is denied. Number six is seventy-seven-sixty-five Airport Boulevard. Application has been recommended for tentative approval.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Application is approved. Thank you. In other business, do you need me just to announce the meeting, or do you need to address it?
Well, we will request a business meeting for Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at two P.M. in the multipurpose room across the atrium here. Mark White, the consultant that is working on our zoning rewrite, will be in town, and he would like to give you an update on the progress that's being made on the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. If there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned.